I call a planning commission meeting for September 5th, 2024 to order, and we'll begin with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Due to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Excused.
Mr. Teedeman?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 15, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Abstain.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Abstain.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have three public hearings, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreational facility, Fun City Adventure Park, at 7960 Plaza Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do. And everybody, when they come up, just come up, give us your name and also spell it too, please.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jun Zhang, I spell J-U-N-Z-H-A-N-G. I'm from Massachusetts. The address is 139 Front Street, Auburn, Massachusetts. And I'm here to request, a formal request for, it's an indoor trampoline adventure park. Within the space, there will be many different play attractions. Some of those are like rope courses, ninja courses, trampolines, ball pits, foam pits, giant playgrounds, there'll be arcades, and we'll be trying to, just a family entertainment center for kids. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I would just note, we do have the four conditions, and two of those conditions pertain to separate code sections in our business code regulations. We just want to make sure that the applicant is aware of those, and if they have any questions, they can certainly direct those to us after the meeting.
Currently, no questions.
Anything from the commission members? I have one thing, I'd like a fifth condition at an AED device.
Could you please explain?
Kathy, could you explain what it is? It's a defibrillator, automatic defibrillator.
Oh, like?
Yeah, it goes on the wall, somebody needs it, you put their-
So when one of the kids gets their grandfather to jump on a trampoline, they can start his heart again.
Okay.
The fire department can help with that.
Yeah, fire department can help.
Okay, so basically have a device there for a fire department or emergency ambulance, things like that.
Yes.
Yeah, not a problem, that's something we can do.
Is there anything else? Mr. Chairman?
I see also you have go-karts, I'm assuming electric go-karts? It was on the, well, on the plans, there's a go-kart area, I'm not sure if it'll be at this specific-
Those are sort of like, more like electrical bumper cars. My architect might have misnamed it as go-karts, no go-karts.
Gotcha, no go-karts, okay, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions, the 15 AED device be installed.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And good luck.
Are we all done?
You're all done.
All right, thank you, guys. Good luck to everyone else.
Number two, we have a conditional use permit to allow outdoor dining and/or drinking not at T's Restaurant at 7345 Center Street. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good evening, my name is Eli Mahler, E-L-I-M-A-H-L-E-R. I'm the architect on this project. What we're proposing is a small patio outdoor dining for the Nona Restaurant, Italian Restaurant. You have drawings in front of you, we have some decorative masonry piers which act as bolards for the safety of the customers. The patio will have just 14 seats, it's a small area. We are removing about six dining chairs from the main dining room to accommodate the entrance into that patio. So we're here to hopefully be granted this request.
Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? Please come up, give us your name and address and spell it. Yeah, if you could just take a seat and-
My name is Crystal Thomas, and I own Styles by Crystal, which is next door. Is it okay if I read off my notes?
Absolutely. Just make sure you read into the mic, or I'll get yelled at.
My concerns about this parking lot have been going on for quite some time, but now seeing this permit and expansion, my concerns are only higher. The business already overflows its parking lot, causing overspill into my property, into my parking lot as well as others. They only have 21 parking spaces, which must accommodate their clients and their staff. The seating capacity far exceeds that number. The seating chart provided on the permit that you see is not including the secondary floor, which also has dining. I can only imagine that this seats 10 to 12 people, with the additional 12, the 14 on the outside, with only 21 parking spots. This becomes a serious issue. When you take those numbers and add them together, it estimated over 50 seating on the inside. And again, her parking lot is only 21 parking spots. I never had issues with the previous owner. I noticed that her patrons began parking in my lot once she opened, even driving over our shared grass at times. I installed signs, that still did not deter them. I then installed, I got my property surveyed, and then installed a fence. The fence still did not deter them, I then had to install a gate. The gate does still not deter them, they open the gate while our business is closed to open it, and to pull in, and to park. I have it on my camera three different times. They also, when her parking lot is full, they pull out of her exit and do like a U-turn on 615 and pull in my exit, almost hitting clients of mine, and as well as an employee. This is a huge liability for me, because I only have 16 parking spaces, and there are five of us. I have five, four employees. We have then five clients, five clients waiting. My parking lot's full with just my patrons, I can't have anyone extra parking in my lot. I had a man who got aggressive with me when I asked him to leave, and started cursing at me. That's happened on two occasions. I did last week sign a tow contract with a tow company, because I just can't allow it to continue to go on. So I'm concerned with taking parking away and adding more seating, so that is where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Well, maybe we would just like to point out, and maybe the applicant can respond, that the site plan that was provided does not reflect the actual distance of the building to the current parking spaces. We provided an exhibit just based on aerial, which shows you what we estimate, what the patio area would look like behind the building, and its close proximity to the current parking spaces. As you can see on the side, this is a one-drive entrance, and then you go around the building to the north, and then you exit. There's parallel parking spaces on the south side of the building. And that, right now, again, it's an estimate, we don't have this surveyed, but we, from an older survey, we estimate that the building distance to that south property line is 16 feet. And that doesn't include the parallel spaces, so if you have a car parked there, then you've reduced that aisle width even further. So, that being said, the fire department had some concerns with driving through and turning radiuses with the addition of the patio, and which is why we were requesting that some turning radiuses be provided. And I just don't see how this patio can be installed without the removal of some parking spaces, and I just don't know that they can afford to remove any parking spaces. So, we do have some concerns as it's presented. I certainly understand why they want to do a patio, I just don't know that it's necessarily the right space for it onsite.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? Mr. Haddon?
Yes, I do have concern about parking, and right now, it's way under, I mean, they're 20 parking lots short, right? And now they gotta remove, I mean, on my count, on what he provided, there's only 14 parking spots and two handicaps, based on this drawing. So I think you're way under on your parking, and the patio is only going to increase the parking, so I have a hard time with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Has there been any attempt to get a parking agreement with the property to the south?
It's my understanding that she does have some sort of an agreement for parking on the, that would be on the right side of the property. And unfortunately, Tass is not here tonight. I can answer only what I know, I wasn't aware of some of the problems. We are removing six spots, and we're adding, we're putting 14, so as far as clients, you know, you're only adding maybe eight. I can't address two neighbors' problems, I cannot.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, my thought is that I don't see how we can do this with, it's already way under the parking requirement. And now that parking requirement will be even further not met, and, I mean, it's not the patio, it's the whole configuration, you know? So unless there's, you know, unless there's some other relief for parking, I don't see how this can go ahead, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman? Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess you're getting the feeling that this is not going in the direction you probably would want right now, so my question would be- My question would be, would you want time to possibly get a parking agreement, so that we would maybe table this, and then come back at the next meeting, and you have a parking agreement with somebody, and we could move forward with that? Is that something that you would want to explore, or no?
No, I wouldn't like to do that, and I'll make sure that the owner is here next time. I expected her to be here tonight. So if it's tabled, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Kathy?
If I could ask a question, this came up internally, and just since you're here, and maybe since if you're going to table it, there's time to explore this. Was there any thought given to putting the patio in the front?
There really isn't very much room in front. They've landscaped it, probably the requirements of your city. I think putting in front, I can at least check with the owner, but it would destroy that planning area completely. I don't know if it would solve your parking problem.
It's 12, 12, isn't it, 12, 12 feet deep? Yeah, 12 feet deep. I don't know, I certainly didn't design it, and I just, just again, it was an internal discussion that we had, and didn't know if that was a thought. Certainly, everyone likes patios, we get it, but, and I don't know if that would work from, you know, from the standpoint of where the kitchen is, and inside, and having to bring things out. It may not work at all, but, you know.
No, you're right on that. The floor should be indicated in the back, not the front, and it would be very hard to try to have one in the front.
Okay.
Was there ever a parking agreement to the property on the south? I mean, you're clearly not going to get one on the north, so to the left of the building. Was there ever a parking agreement there?
That was my understanding, I asked her the same question if-
Kathy, do you know that answer?
Larry?
Mr. Chairman, yes, there was a parking agreement, excuse me, when Slice Pizzeria went into the building, the original restaurant, they had a parking agreement on either side to allow for the parking. When the building to the south was sold, the owner at that time extinguished that parking agreement. So it extinguished it across the board.
Sure.
That's where we're at right now.
Is that the same owner that's there now, still?
I think it's a different owner, south. At this, down here, I think there's new owners there. It was offices before, it's offices now.
So, different use, different time of day, kind of thing?
The hours of our operations are from 4:00 to 9:00. So basically, their dinner hours are, they start at 4:00, but probably their dinner, most of our, is probably around 6:00, 6:00 to 9:00. Offices are closed at that time. She mentioned that she had some agreement with that property on one side.
Currently, or in the past?
No, currently, was my understanding.
Mr. Varga?
Well, I mean, we can only go with what's in front of us, and there's nothing here that says there's a parking agreement. I mean, my calculation is you're someplace in the vicinity of 24 spaces short. You actually have less than half the required parking. I just don't see, you can move the, you don't even need to build the patio, you still have a severe parking problem. We've heard some testimony that it already doesn't work. I don't feel, I don't feel moved to table this, I just, you know, I think we need to move on it.
Because there's 20 spots to the south, and even with those 20,
Which is still short.
Without the patio, so even if they had a park- I don't feel moved to table it either, but if- Anything else from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with six conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
No.
Mr. Perkovich?
No.
Mr. Teedeman?
No.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Crocker?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. We have a conditional use permit to allow for a landscape buffer reduction at 8558 Mennor Avenue, is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members, staff members. My name is Don Dietrich, D-E-I-T-R-I-C-K, and I'm with Emmy Osborn Properties, we're the contractor for the project. I sent a narrative over with the application, which explains how we arrived where we're at. The current church is short of parking spaces. They purchased the land for a use as a parking lot only. We have submitted drawings, and per your review, we understand your comments, we understand the conditions. The owner and the user have no problem with the conditions that you have provided. We, with our portal submittal, we submitted the landscape plan, we submitted a letter from the only residential property owner that abuts our property, and she advocated that she was in favor of our request. We also submitted a photometric, I don't know if you received it, I think we submitted it to the building department, but I have copies if you'd like to see it, I have them with me. Okay, and then we also have, we have a lot consolidation that was performed by Barrington, it's done, it is, at the diocese right now, they're going to have it recorded. And we hope to get that in our hands shortly. The, let's see. Oh, and we have four poles proposed for the property, and they're 30-foot in height, and we have a fixture picked out that satisfies what the photometric shows. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Any landscape questions? Our landscape person is here. And we hope we can get approval.
Thank you. Anybody here wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We have six conditions noted.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the six conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Abstain.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Under old business, we have an architectural reimage of a commercial building, Federales, at 8787 Mennor Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Please come up, give us your name and address. Let's go through round three.
Hello, everybody, how are you? Bill Thompson, B-I-L-L-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I'm just here before you. We took notes, I've discussed all the, from the previous hearing, what needs to be taken care of with putting the building to its approved colors, and also returning the stone to its original condition, or putting up new stone to replace the stone that was painted. We've also since put in a pergola request, and provided you guys with a request of a pergola with the ballards, and a drawing for that, for preliminaries, so we can go ahead and execute the pergola and the ballards. We've also noted on the report that I just received from you guys prior to the hearing, the conditions regarding the lighting and the concrete, the sidewalk, that the cracks need replaced, which we'll get that taken care of. Right now, the biggest problem is that we're up against is the stone, because of the timeframe and the financial distress it's going to be putting on, and possibly, if we can't get open in time, the financial stress of not being open. We've already gone through preliminary health inspections, where we have our preliminaries there, we have fire inspection for occupancy and stuff in the next couple of days. So we're just here to possibly see if we can have a certain timeframe, if we get the building corrected, as far as the paint, if we could have a certain timeframe to get the stone in place and still open while we're fixing the stone issue. I'm also gonna, we have a few other people speaking on our behalf, Claudio and Jennifer, I'll go ahead and let them speak, okay? Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Hood. It seems that this was a case of a lot of miscommunication, so we just want to make sure that we do what we need to do to get the restaurant open. You know, in a hard economy to be opening a restaurant in. The brickwork, or the stonework on front, it cannot be repurposed, it cannot be like sandblasted to its original, so it's a huge financial burden. It has to all be removed and then replaced. So we're asking, and what the problem is, we would like to open by September 16th, but we cannot get that work done until October. And so that's what the problem is, and we're sort of at a standstill. We can definitely make sure that all of these other conditions are met, but it's the time, the time that we need. So, did you want to add something?
Hi, my name's Claudio, C-L-A-U-D-A-O, partner of Federales. Yeah, so actually Juan Arturo is not around, he had an emergency, he couldn't attend to the meeting, but actually, you know, like Jennifer says, was a lot of miscommunication in between Bill, and the fire department, and all that stuff. So we're like, really sorry about what happened, and, you know, so we're here trying to open our doors sometime soon, and we'd like to see if we can work things out with you guys, either way. Like Jennifer said, we will get those things done before, you know, the first week of October, if you guys, you know, let us continue doing what we're doing right now. And that's it.
Thank you. Now, we're just gonna discuss the reimage right now. We'll get to the pergola in a little bit, but Kathy, anything from the administration?
I guess I would ask if they could clarify that they need a little more time. First of all, their opening would be determined by the building department, that's their call. And if they received partial occupancy or temporary occupancy, they can certainly open. But the question I'm still not clear on is, is what would need to, what they're trying to do by October? If they're saying they can't buff out the stone, then are they, what are they trying to do by October, I guess is the question.
Bill?
It would be the replacement of that stone. That stone is concreted in, it's, it's gonna be quite the project. We're gonna have to basically demo all the face of that stone, resurface it with the concrete, and then apply and put in new stone to achieve back to the original state. We had also mentioned the past hearing, you know, possibly coming up with maybe a different texture, a different color to match the colors, but we aren't even going to, we're just gonna return it back to the original condition that you guys requested. So with that being said, it's quite a big job, it's quite a big financial burden, and for us to stay, if we can't open while that's being done, and I understand this is based on the occupancy from the building department, but I didn't know if this is tied in with the building department? Is the building department going to approve our occupancy license with this not being done, because we did not follow the criteria of what you guys requested from the city? And if that would hold up any type of building permits, and occupancy permits? So that's what our biggest concern is. By October, we feel we can have it demoed and replaced within the first week of October. We would just like to make sure that we can get open and start producing income while we're replacing that stone, okay?
Thank you. Kathy, anything more?
We don't see that there would be an issue with them opening. Again, they would most likely do a temporary occupancy until everything's finalized, which they do all the time, so that's not a huge concern. We would have to certainly confirm that with the chief building official, but we don't see that there would be any issues. Now, the patio is a separate issue. If they're doing work on the front of the building, they would probably not be able to open that patio right away.
It's cold in October anyway.
Yeah.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hadd. Oh, sorry. Mr. Varga? I was looking at him.
I'm sorry, I guess you're gonna speak for me.
You're fine.
Could you explain these green panels, I've not seen those before, or maybe I don't?
I'm sorry, the-
I don't find.
Green panels?
We're staying on four, sticking on four.
Oh, that's on the picture of the pergola.
We're gonna get to all that, yeah, we'll get to that.
This is for the reimage, and then we can go ahead and move forward to the pergola, please, sir.
Just, just the building, the pergola's next.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hadd?
There you go. So just to be clear, you're gonna replace the stone with, whatever you can, you're gonna repaint, because that's the other thing?
We're gonna repaint to the colors that were approved in the first time.
With exterior-
With exterior paint.
Okay, with exterior paint, and it was exterior paint. And we did send in the samples of the right things. They, they just sent the interior paint that we painted inside when they submitted those to me. He submitted the wrong containers, and we did follow up with the proper exterior paint. But yes, we will use an exterior paint and go with the colors of the gray shadows and the artillery gray, which was approved in the first place. That we can get done, you know, in a very timely fashion.
Right, thank you.
It ought to be done in days, but.
Thank you. Is there anything else on item four? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the five conditions.
Second.
Kathy, real quick, do we need to put a condition in there regarding not having it done before the opening?
We should set a date.
That's up to you. If you want to set a date for when it should be completed.
Would you say mid-October?
I would say, let's, let's put a week cushion in there, a week to 10 days, you know how construction goes. So we were looking for the first week of October, so if we go mid-October, I think that'd be a comfortable cushion for us.
November 1st.
How about November 1st?
Yeah, there we go.
November 1st.
Well, that'd be even better.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the five conditions. With condition one, having a timeline of no later than November 1st for completion of that work.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Thank you.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. All right, under new business, a miscellaneous review to amend a conditional use permit, Federales, at 8787 Mennor Avenue. All right, tell us a little bit about the?
Okay, we've supplied you some architectural drawings, which would incorporate pergola along that front sidewalk that's in front of the building currently. The sidewalk is already existing. This also incorporates the ballards that you requested us to put in. Now, I also seen a conditional on there, a conditional comment in there that we'd have to make sure that we're with the engineering group of the building department to satisfy the distances of the ballards that are going in, that to protect the pergola seating. So this is basically the patio area that we're proposing to you with, with the pergola built into it.
Thank you. Anything from the administration? Kathy?
We've, we've noted eight conditions with this amendment to the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hat.
So the color of the pergola, is that gonna be the gray in the previous, or is it gonna be black?
I know, that's not funny, I don't, I don't mean it, but, no, but we will go ahead and make the pergola, you know what, I do, I do not have, I better ask that answer to Arturo, but it would match the building, okay, with the new color, with the original colors that were approved. I wouldn't imagine we'd go with a black pergola and it not match the rest of the building. But let me go ahead and just get that question answered. Is it gonna be the artillery gray, or is it gonna be the gray shadow? It would be better if I had that clarified.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crocker?
So your original request was for six tables, and now we're up to 16 tables out in front? I believe that was the increase, quite a, quite a different animal from what you first proposed.
Yeah, that was at the beginning, remember, we weren't gonna put in a pergola write-off, but we figured because this was tabled and we could get in here and get the drawing done in time, that's why we went ahead and submitted this. Yes, the original was for just six tables out there, and we'd have to put the ballards in as a conditional.
So, so, I mean, just from a aesthetic standpoint, I think this is a, it's kind of a big, a big patio for, for the size of the building that you have, at least that's what appears to me. You know, I, I don't have a true rendering of it with the building far away. And then also your pergola is obstructing your sign a little bit. You're, you're aware of that and you're okay with that? You don't wanna change anything on that? I mean, which would be a whole different process.
Yeah, we are aware of that, I believe the owner was aware of that, but there's really no place to raise it up to.
Okay.
Unless we did, you know, went past the stack of the building. You know, there is additional sign, there was additional signs for Dairy Queen out front, but my understanding is it's hard for us to put any signage out there due to the, the new conditions of the city for how high the signs can be on the street and everything. And with the existing, for the True Life or the Life, something in the back, they pretty much already take up everything there for us to put a sign out front on the post. But there was originally a DQ sign out on the post above the Life, I wanna say True Life, sign in the back for the back customer. But I don't think we can achieve anything there because of the height restrictions of that type of signage now, as opposed to, that's what the fast signs, who does our signs, had said that the restrictions would not allow us to put a sign out there currently.
I see you digging in the book. Do you have anything?
I believe that, that front sign is still there, so it's a non-conforming sign. Is it gone? Oh, then never mind. We, I mean, you can do a ground sign on the property and it would just have to meet the, the sign standards, which we'd be happy to go over those with you. I mean, we are certainly concerned about the fact that you have a sign, you can't elevate that brick column, by the way, and put a sign above the roof line, because that's not permitted. So, you know, that's, you know, that's one issue, but you could have a ground sign there. Could the pergola be removed, you know? I think there's a couple of different ways, maybe you could, you could design this. It is a big structure. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Anything from the? Mr. Varga?
Mr. Chairman?
Our architect.
There's two different renderings here. It's funny, because it depends, the way it's printed, it looks one color. The pergola, it looks like it's kind of a blue-gray color. I mean, is that the color it is? Blue?
Blueish?
But I noticed this one image that we have, that when I look on the screen, doesn't, this looks brown.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have a color one in front of me, sir. I apologize.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is what color is it? You know, I mean.
And that's what I mentioned with the previous question, that we would get the color matched to the approved colors of the building.
And these, these green panels, could you speak about them? Are they, are they?
They're just a decorative panel.
I mean, it, it looks like from one of the, it looks like they're, it's like glass or the light goes through it, or?
It's sort of like a plastic panel.
You gotta, you gotta speak into the mic. Yeah, come on, you gotta get into the mic here.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
It's a, it's like a plastic panel that's made to look like foliage. They sell them at Sam's Club in a big sheet. A lot of people use it as a barrier.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to sense what the organizational principle is here for the colors, and it's like things going on. I mean, it's not that anything is specifically wrong, it just doesn't seem to, to kind of collect itself into a, an organized image, you know? There's this green, there's either blue or brown, the framework of it. And then the two conditions, I think, are gonna have some effect on the way this works. You need to have a second exit from this area, and you also, and I don't know this, I couldn't tell by looking, is the current design extending, protruding into the 30-foot setback from the street?
No, based on our estimation with the site plan we had on record, it, it does not. It would have to.
And I saw that as a note, and I'm, so I'm questioning, does it, or, because if it has to be adjusted, that's gonna change.
It's 60 feet long, but, but the, the setback, where Larry's got his pointer to the, to the front right away is 30 feet.
Okay, so it does meet the, the condition that was?
But we didn't.
Number three here.
Right, they didn't provide us with a site plan, so I'm making sure that that's emphasized.
And I'm just trying to verify.
Right.
If it has to be changed, that's gonna change the way it looks.
Sure.
I, I guess I would, the same with the stone, the, the different colors, I would, I'd still like to see something that represents what's actually gonna be built. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying you're trying to not tell us, but there seems to be enough, I mean, that image there, the one that's there, and, and on the reproduction here, looks blue, bluish.
This looks brown.
This looks brownish. The green here looks subdued, but in other images, it looks really strong. I, I'd kinda, and I see no lighting at all in the pergola. I mean, I know there was a question about decorative lighting, but what about just lighting that allows people to see what they're eating, you know? Is there gonna be lighting incorporated into this?
Yes.
Because I don't see the lighting.
So you need a better image.
I, I just think all the loose ends need to be brought together. In a consistent way.
One thing I have is, is, is I like the idea, it's, it's something different on Mennor Avenue. It's going to be different. But the ballards, and we've done this before, are incorporated into the structure.
No. No. If, if the ballards.
No, 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 that we've had that done.
Oh, okay.
Rather than, I think I said this last time, that we don't want them to look like a boat is tying onto them.
Okay.
And if we could just have the whole structure work better together, like maybe, and I don't, I'm not an architect, but maybe the bottom of that pergola is structurally sound enough that it acts as a baller. So yeah, that we, you don't have to see all that, and I'm not a big fan of the green either. I don't know what achieves that. I think we did a stone half-wall before on a, on a different bill, but I, I think there's a lot of loose ends there. But the, but the single pole ballard sitting there, it just doesn't, we're trying to get away from that. Now, that may work, right? It might work, but.
No.
So let me, let me just clarify.
Oh.
The distances, they, they don't conform.
Okay. So. That's all I got.
So let me just clarify then, what's your, first things first, I have to go ahead and get the proper color scheme down. Okay, so let's have it redone to match the approved colors of the building, so that the pergola matches the approved colors of the building. Then secondly, is the structure to maintain safety for the patrons? You're suggesting maybe we can go ahead and build up the structure to act as the barrier as opposed to putting in the ballards? Okay. You know, we've done this at other locations where we actually put in, you know, a stone structure, but 50-foot long, the, the cost effectiveness of that is gonna be a little bit astronomical. So let me get with our architect and see what we can incorporate into that to possibly incorporate the, the Ballard safety for the patrons and then resubmit that part of it with the proper colors. And then maybe we can satisfy what's needed for the, the structure itself, the colors itself, and incorporating the ballards into the structure.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yeah, also to Mr. Varga's point, you do need a second exit out of there.
Yes.
And it's gotta be accessible.
Yes.
And so, I mean, if you were gonna put it at the end of this, that doesn't look super accessible. So.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see something for people with disabilities, so they can get out of there if they need to.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll go ahead and I have those notes, and I'll make sure that I bring that to the attention of Arturo and the architect, so we can achieve what you guys would like.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I'd like to table this. I agree.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks.
Okay, so.
And you can work with Kathy.
Right.
And, and Larry and?
And work on the pergola portion of it. We'll go ahead and see about getting our permits to open and our occupancies, and then we'll achieve that stone replacement by the first, and that way we can at least get open and rotating some monies through the location.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Off the record, not as part of the review that we just had, have you just thought about taking thin stone and laying it up over the top of the existing stone?
I, I did, I did think that. Are you talking about?
Replacing where you painted it, and you want to tear it all down and replace. Did you just think about refacing it with the real thin stone that comes in sheets that?
I, I did do, I did think about that, sir. That was something that I mentioned in our last hearing. Can we just box it out, possibly cheat over it and get some type of architectural stone?
Just so it looks like natural stone.
Natural stone.
That natural.
I, I think that would be a, a great way to go. It'd be a lot more cost effective, and it would cut down our timeframe, so let's all entertain that and get that idea.
Just off the record, so, you know, if, if, if you want to come back and make that part of your, you know, propose that when you come back after the table, you know?
Okay.
We can clarify that.
It was approved. I mean, it's to return it, and then that's unacceptable.
Okay. We did approve for you to do what you were gonna do, but what you're suggesting might be an approvable.
Yeah, return it to existing.
Right.
And have the city review that.
Right, so, because on the tabling stuff, we can generally get into the next hearing, which is in a few weeks from now. So hopefully I can have that quarterback with an alternative for the stone and still give us the timeframe if that's not suitable to you guys. We still have the timeframe of November 1st, just to go ahead and do the tear down.
Just coordinate that with the city. You don't have to come back with that.
Don't wait for the next meeting. Do it with Kathy.
Perfect.
For the stone.
Okay. Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good.
Number six, we have a building addition, site alteration, Long John Silver's at 7390 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about Long John Silver's and the hush puppies.
My name's Chris Wilson. I'm a representative of Veteran Development and Construction, 9099 Hendricks Road, Mennor Avenue, or Mennor, Mennor, Ohio. We've been contracted by Long John Properties to update the aesthetics of the, the building, remove any, remove and/or replace wood rot, water damage, anything like that. Update the color scheme, LED lighting, and some minor artwork on the exterior of the building.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Maybe if, if the applicant could just comment, we have the seven conditions noted.
Do you have them?
We have those.
Pardon me?
The, the conditions that were in the staff report, do you have those and do you have any concerns with those?
I do not. I do not have those in front of me.
Anybody have any?
Yes, we do agree.
Okay. Anything from commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
In general, in terms of the color palette, it's actually more presentable than the existing, so I don't, I don't think there's a problem. I don't have a problem with it.
Tell us a little bit about the portholes.
We were trying to get more information on them. They're five-foot in diameter, brushed aluminum, and they have a glass insert that they, they can change the artwork that goes behind it. From my understanding, the artwork would have to be approved, I guess, every time they would change it. So that we were still kinda trying to work on.
Kathy, could you talk about that a little bit?
I think we just want to make sure that whatever is put in there, that it doesn't constitute a signage. We have some buildings in the city that have truly artworks that have been approved as design of the building versus a sign. So for example, a great example we have is the Outback Building on Plaza Boulevard. They have an image on the side of the building, and it's a map of Australia. It doesn't constitute signage, there's no wording on it, so it was acceptable as a design component of the building versus signage. If these images don't represent Long John Silver's in the sense of, okay, so another example is Taco Bell put some color panels on the side of the building and they had bells in them. Well, that's part of the, the brand. So we asked them to remove that because it didn't meet the sign parameters. So we asked them to remove that because it didn't meet the sign parameters from a size standpoint. You know, if these are just images of the sea, we might be fine, but...
Fishermen or something.
Yes, something like that, but we just need to know what it is because we just want to be careful that it doesn't constitute a signage.
All right, so they do have different options. They do have what you're referring to as far as signage. I can get with the owners and, you know, see what they would like to put in there.
I think, but if you're going to approve it as a design element, we would just want to know what that is. That's the only thing.
We, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
We wouldn't want it to turn into a menu, you know, like, oh, this is the special of the day or this is, you know, this is, try this product or try, pictures of food. You know, if it's going to be truly artwork, you know, scenes of the ocean.
Nautical.
Nautical themes, nothing to do with product, then I think that's fine. But if they're going to promote the business in those images, I guess it's some kind of screen then, right? There's a screen, electronic screen.
Well, there's a glass, piece of glass there.
I know, but how do you change the image?
It just slides behind the glass.
Oh, so it's a fixed thing? Okay, so, yeah, so that, unfortunately, that sounds real convenient to put in like the specials of the day and that's not what anyone wants to see.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. I mean, they do have, I don't think I submitted it, they do have options that have, you know, just the ocean pictures, that type of stuff. And they did have something that had some kind of verbiage on there as far as like Long John. That wouldn't be acceptable.
Correct.
Right, right. And so Kathy, we would, we could just say that that condition that deals with that is, it's, let's see, I just want to make sure that what you have there is good. Yeah, okay, yeah, it's three.
Mr. Chairman. I wanted to bring up number three because it says the portholes shall be reduced in size. Is only one size available? Is that all?
I believe so, so they may not end up going with that?
So that's something we would need to decide.
Just in a, it's a recommendation, obviously you can do what you want with it. It just, they did seem rather large, that's all. And the example that was provided wasn't the actual building that's on Mennor Avenue, so we weren't sure of the proportion.
So how big are they submitted? Five feet?
Five foot in diameter. And yes, these are just renderings, I'm not sure that's actual size.
Mr. Tatum?
I'm sorry?
You all set?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, so these are probably pre, they come from the home office, you know, the images? So I doubt that either we keep them the size they have or we ask that they be removed. I don't think we're going to, and with the content that we're suggesting.
It's all or nothing.
It's all or nothing, but and with the content that's approvable.
Well, I like the portals, but...
Honestly, it breaks up that long wall.
Yeah. It's something.
Whatever you want to do.
All right. So then could I suggest that we would make the alteration to condition three, that they not be reduced in size? So we...
An artwork.
And the proposed artwork, yeah, just leave the rest of that. Yeah, just get rid of the, get rid of the first sentence and then just leave the rest.
There you go. Can we make them bigger?
We can try.
Anything else?
I do have a question about four. The, and I submit the pictures on it, heading eastbound on Mennor Avenue. The original plan was, we excluded it in our work, but we'd like to give the owner some sort of direction as far as what he can do in that landscaping flower bed right there. We were going to remove everything, return it to grass because that bush kind of blocks everything heading eastbound. It looks like a building hiding behind the bush. They would like to have it removed completely. It's not actually up against the building. There's a walkway that goes in between the bushes and the building itself, so I don't know if that would classify as the foundation planting that I think it refers to.
Kathy, did you have something on that?
We certainly understand that the height of those bushes are rather large. We just didn't want to see it just grassed. We do have a code requirement that says within, that there should be plantings between the right of way and the front of the building. So even low vegetation is fine and you can certainly get rid of those big, big bushes so that it obviously opens up that view, but we just didn't want to see it just grassed. Actually, those, you know, the small landscaping you have there is nice, whether it be updated, I don't know if it's, if they're as healthy as they look in the picture, but if they need to be updated, fine, but they could be more of the same. And that's why we, you know, basically referred to 1162 and that's under section 07. And, I mean, that's why we need something. I mean, there should be something there as opposed to nothing and just grass.
Well, in the middle, in the front, there's another flower bed on the inside of that walkway. Would that meet the code requirements as far as in between the right of way and building? I mean, the owner was just trying to find something that was low maintenance, you know, doesn't require water, you know, all that kind of...
Kathy?
I mean, you have a landscape bed there. It just seems as though it wouldn't be that challenging to put some small, low plantings there in lieu of those large bushes. It doesn't have to be a rather extensive amount, but to have the one side landscaped and the other side not would necessarily be balanced. So we would like to see, I mean, that's generally what we require. I know it's an existing building, but whenever we, you know, see that opportunity, that, you know, the building's getting a wonderful facelift and we'd like to see the landscaping complement that and not just be stripped completely down to just a lawn.
I think we could meet some, you want to get rid of the giant bush that covers up the building and the city wants some sort, you had to break up the grass.
The owner wanted to remove all of it and just put crushed brick in there. But I understand there has to be some sort of plantings, so we were trying to meet the code and, you know, his request. I thought just moving that front landscape bed and the walkway would still meet the code because there's the bed in the front of the actual building.
Yeah. Maybe just divide the ones that are there. I do that all the time.
So we could, we could work on something to remove those bushes and put some other sort of plantings there that are...
Fantastic.
Absolutely agree.
Yep. Mr. Varga.
All right, just one other question. I see you're putting up screens to hide all the mechanical equipment. Wonderful. Is it the same color as the roof?
Well, we actually, the owner decided not to go through with it because the expense was... Well, you have, you have to have an engineer come in, look at the roof. The companies, they sell the panels, they don't sell the posts, so you'd have to have the posts engineered and, you know, meet the wind requirements and all that. So it was getting quite hefty form right now. He wants to eventually, just not at this moment.
I'm on the conundrum here. I was looking, that was the nicest thing about the whole proposal. No. Well, I guess the concern I have is that you show them in the image. I know it's not the same building, but, or it may be similar, but you show them in your presentation. I'd like to have it.
It's a condition right now, right?
I don't think it is, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make it a condition. I know you don't want to hear that.
Can be a different form of screening.
Yeah, yeah, you don't, I would like all the mechanical equipment screened. I don't care how you do it, but I don't want to look at the mechanical equipment. So if you go with partial screens, you know, or, you know, instead of screening off the entire deck, because you may be changing out equipment. Are you changing out equipment in this?
No, no, all the equipment's going to remain.
So I would like to make another, what, number seven, condition, no, number eight, that all mechanical equipment be screened and because you're on a corner, it's going to be from probably all three sides. It doesn't have to be a full deck screen, you don't have to write that part, but all mechanical equipment should be screened and with a screening material that's probably the same color as the new roof color.
That was the original intention.
That would make sense, right? So that's a different kind of screening than the kind that you were talking about which would require separate posts and, I mean, putting it around a piece of equipment is different than, you know, so...
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, we got that in there.
Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with eight conditions, the eighth being all rooftop mechanicals will be screened.
Striking of the first line in number three.
Striking the first sentence in number three.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Number eight, the applicant has asked to table the miscellaneous review to amend...
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry. The miscellaneous review to amend a conditional use permit at 7121 Center Street. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Kathy, anything?
Nothing else.
We entertain a motion to adjourn.